State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today. And just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses lawn mower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero turn mowers. We have a full line of the steel weed trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment, to paint, to hardware, anything you need. Come see us. We'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Geun and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition.
We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Geun to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
... for this city in your son Jesus' name, amen.
... to the flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everybody to April the fifteenth, Winfield City Council Meeting, 2025. Have everybody got the taxes filed? First item on the agenda is approved minutes for April first, 2025 meeting. I need to ask for a motion to approve those minutes. Nobody's got them. Problem or comment that hasn't been corrected already. Keep making motion. Larry, second all in favor. All right, we're going to table this next item that couldn't make, going to come in the table. I made the sixth meeting. So we go through the next item on the open bids for cemetery lawn care. Got one. Y'all go ahead and accept this about opening it. Good future. Tim and Keith, they want to get on some stuff. They might see if they want to go on one where we're weeding here. This is going to be for Bigby's Lawn Care. Everybody sent out, sent this to several one of these lists, bid sheet like this. Cost of minimum twelve mowings, weed cutting of the entire city cemetery is nine thousand dollars. Your cost for each additional mowing and weed cutting for the entire city cemetery is seven hundred and fifty bucks. Ben and Racket. Need to ask for motion to accept that bid. Some of them we have. Larry made a motion. Keith and Tim, second all in favor. Nine thousand. Next item on the agenda is purchase of a garbage truck. Me and Rob have been talking. I may have mentioned one or two of y'all or more of y'all. Rob feels like it's time that we need to go ahead and put our order in for a truck because of the timeline it takes to get it. And I told him to get some quotes, to get a quote, I think, on one. Rob, you got, have you got a quote? Have you done, did that happen? Has everybody looked at that? This is who we use every time we've done one thing. We've had good luck with any of the equipment company. He's going to, which, you're going to retire a truck.
Yeah.
Which one is it?
Twenty fifteen freight line.
Twenty fifteen freight line. We'll put up, once, we want to keep it till the other will get here. We'll keep it till, if we order this truck and it arrives, we'll put that one up for surplus. What's the, what's the, what's the oldest, is that the oldest one you guys set freight line?
No, the ten works fourteen, but it's in excellent good shape. We thought it huge, you know, the freight line.
Yeah.
We got it huge.
The council don't have any questions on that quote. I need to ask for a motion to go ahead and place a order for this truck. Gina made a motion. James second all in favor. Go ahead and tell them to build it, I guess. Do you need this quote signed?
I think I can just send PO down.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Rob needing to purchase a lawnmower.
Yeah.
The, he's, you want to tell them that we've been talking with Allen's fire department?
Yes, sir. His lawnmower kind of gone down. He was talking about getting another one. And I told him I'd be glad they have one we have. It's in pretty good shape. I just tried to get a new one about every five years, you know, and bought it in good shape. We could sell it. But he said he would like to have the one that we were going to surplus. So it'll be helping him out there in the city.
You got quotes here too. I think y'all sent that quote on there. We've had pretty good luck with doing it the way he's doing it. Like I said, every five years. And Allen's has, his lawnmower has been on the breakdown mode. So if we can move that up there, so it's surplus and possibly he's got one or something that he wants surplus, we can do it later. That's from the fire department. I feel like what he's got is pretty old anyway.
He got it from the car.
Yeah. Ask for motion to, to, to purchase that one. Tim made a motion. Gina second all in favor. Appreciate it, Rob. Appreciate the job y'all do for keeping the town looking like it is. I think, I think anybody that comes through Winfield, brag on me. I thank the state for bragging on you a little bit because a lot of times, you know, we pick up, I think, some of their trash and do some of their work. But we've surrounded the state highway coming through the city. We take a little bit off them having to do work inside the city limit for it. I'm sure West and appreciates it. Helps their little too for us highway. Two fifty-three and then one eighteen, one seventy-one forty-three. Next item on the agenda is old business. Keith, what kind of old business you got?
When they're going to start doing some more work for the gym?
We can go up and bid it. Todd, you heard anything on your end of the term?
Well, my understanding, my understanding about the site work is that they can't, they're going to have to dig all that pool out and bring in dirt. And they couldn't do it while it was wet. And so they hadn't done any, hadn't turned a, hadn't turned a bit of dirt in about the last fifty, sixty days. But now that it's drying up, they can get back to work again. But it's not holding anything up because we still, we're still making cuts and making decisions about plans.
Yeah, we haven't got the plan down yet.
So we're not really, we're not really in a position to start pushing it out to bid. So we really don't have to hurry on the site work. We're not, you know, it's not holding us up. We're just kind of...
Kind of waiting on Mother Nature to cooperate.
It might take a while.
They're waiting on, waiting on getting some more information on the gymnasium. So the plans.
How it's going to sit and work's going to sit.
Yeah, and how much it's going to cost.
Cause you know.
I had something else. Go ahead. Maybe I can remember what it was.
Yeah, we got, I've been reached out to him. They didn't wire it and they...
Yeah, I remember that. Comfrey's still there. I guess it is old business. What they going to put other job at for the, for athletic director?
I hadn't seen Gina here. I feel like she would have done, I feel like she would have done, asked to post that position. But I remember talking with you about it. Ain't nobody for the park board either. Yeah, the park been full. You haven't heard anything every night, have you? I don't know if they'll try to bring some, I don't feel like they're going to try to bring somebody in right in the middle of baseball season. I believe short had agreed to fill in until they do find somebody.
I think we need to, the city council needs to say the applications. And I think some of us needs to be sitting in on the interviews. If everybody would agree with that. I know we can't have two, three of us down at one time.
About, what's your, on that, Todd, for, has that been appointed board by the council? Is that open meet?
The board meet, the park board meet, public meetings, open public meetings.
But the public, is the public allowed to speak if not on?
I don't know how they operate their agenda, but generally you have to be on the agenda or be recognized to speak if you want to.
It's kind of what I was thinking. Kind of like water.
But as far as the council attending, that's simple. As long as the council stays under a quorum, if the council ever constituted a quorum, they have, that would have to advertise that as a joint meeting to show that it's a, because the fact that it's advertised public meeting for them does not give us cover to go down there. We would actually have to advertise it as a joint public meeting and, or a special call meeting of us if we went down there in more than a quorum. But as long as we stayed under a quorum, we could attend no problem. And have input. You can have input. You know, you're just not, you're not transacting business in the city. You have to transact that up here, but you can attend and have input.
But can we sit in on the job interviews?
That's a, well, it depends on what they set up, whether it's the full board or whether it's just a committee of the boards that schedules the interview, but you can request that, yes. And there shouldn't, there's no, nothing will prevent you from sitting in. But you find out when they aren't there, you'd like to, you know, you'd like, council has some representatives there for the interviews. Because ultimately, they're going to recommend, and this body's going to do the hiring. It's going to be their recommendation, but y'all are actually going to make the decision on that. So that's the reason why they would want you now to be involved.
He ain't going to ask about rain, she not going to.
I hope he did.
I called her, talked to our engineer, and he stated he was hoping to get started later this week, if not the first, the next week.
Thank you. It's supposed to rain this weekend.
And I just...
Just call it, say it's going to rain no matter what.
I just told him, I said, if you could, I understand they've been busy. And he said it's been cold and it's been wet. And it's true, it's been wet. And that hinders, both of those hinder paving asphalt roads. I just asked, would he, talk to him, please push them to get this done as soon as possible because we're fixing to bid. This is 2024 budgeted roads. Correct. Correct me if I'm right. And we're fixing to be to the point where he's going to start talking about 2025. And we're going to be in there. I said, if you could, to push them, see if we can get this done. And said he would.
I mean, yeah, but I don't usually, I don't allow that. I mean, I usually don't talk. We allow so much for paving in the budget period. It ain't like, if we're going to spend a big penny, it's not that way. But it's not saying we can't add.
Talking about other roads being done.
We got a lot of focus. We need to be up because what are we going to counter enough to the core of it? But I do want to see the vote we got down to the word. I don't think we've been seven, eight, and haven't done what we said was going to. I agree with you. I've been, I've been looking. It's like he can only answer for himself. You relay the message to them, put pressure, people putting pressure, you know. The same way it was in a pilot, we'd be in in six months and took nine. But they had a little bit, but didn't have a whole lot. We got a lot of that here just a little bit. Gina?
About two years ago.
How many?
Three.
Two years.
Maybe three. We approved a bid to have the tennis court, for sure. Paid, or agreed thing at the end of time. And we paid, it was twenty-six thousand dollars, and we paid thirteen thousand dollars upfront. Now that pickleball court, which they wanted that other tennis court completely tore out and then you would put in, here it was no crack. That's beside the point. Virtually the same size as that pickleball court that ran the concrete. It's got a few cracks on it, but since we already have fifteen thousand dollars in service and that size court, and it's the same base paint and everything that goes down on it, I think we need to contact the people to come put that coat, the top, the base coat and the paint on that pickleball court for the fifteen thousand dollars we got left in that investment.
I agree with that, but Gina would have to be here to kind of enlighten me a little bit on what that consists of. It's a twenty-something thousand dollar.
Twenty-six thousand dollars. We paid half of it.
Yeah, paid half of it upfront. Do you, do you remember Mike, was that maybe included?
I don't. Just putting base up there and putting paint on it, striking it and putting, striking two pickleball courts on top of that is what the bid was.
What was the purpose of?
Plus, plus it was also two temporary portable pickleball nets that you, or wheels that you move in and out. So that would give us two, the two nets that would be, plus the thing painted. And then we would only be out two more pickleball nets.
I remember, I don't remember talking about it. I don't remember talking about it yet. I can't remember what we're supposed to get.
That was like before we even started talking about pickleball.
Right.
Yeah, they were going to, they were going to paint two pickleball courts on there. And first, two nets for it.
They done researched.
But not for that original thirteen thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
No, it wasn't. That was way before we even started talking about the pickleball court. That was just for tennis courts.
Same size court, don't mind.
Well, it doesn't...
Same amount of, same amount of...
Because they were going to have to reformat the inside for the measurements for the pickleball court.
Twenty-six to five hundred and twenty, don't mind.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned it. I mean, I'd like to say where we're at on that with that company because I remember it's twenty, like I said, twenty-six thousand dollars. You paid thirteen thousand upfront, but I can't remember exactly what was included and the reason for that thirteen thousand upfront. And that's the same company, if I'm not mistaken, that come in and fixed the bid for the pickleball court. Is it?
Yeah. But originally we got on the concrete. They were, that, that court, tennis court tore out and new concrete slapped, but damn. All it needs to be is ground bound. There's some cracks in it, there'll be cracks in the paint. So that's fifty-year-old concrete ain't going to crack.
Right, that's why we didn't get no bids.
Correct, yeah.
Right. But I'm like Dan, I need to know what we got on that initial payment with that company that we did that with.
And if there was an expiration date on it?
It is, but send off the pink hell on back.
As long as it's not expired, then it is a certain amount.
I'll need to check on that. What else you got? Overload. Larry?
I've got this, you remember here a while back, we approved that thirty-nine twelve for that building for the police department? And I've got the bigger one. We got a bigger building for the same price. Brett and I went down and dated, and she had done sold her one that I looked at and got a price on. And this is a ten between for the same money.
We done approved it.
Right. It didn't have the taxes on it. Forty-three ninety-four. That's it delivered and set up.
Yeah. We done approved it. So do you, how, did we just drop the bomb, didn't get it delivered or?
Well, one time I got back down there to tell her we wanted it, it was done, gone. But she had another repo and she basically let us have a bigger one for the same price. So Brett's going to take a check back down there. And they said they try to get it delivered this week.
Yeah. That's everything set up and all.
Right. And they needed some blocks and we done got the blocks. I had some blocks and we done got them over there when they get there.
If you need any more, I still feel appeared.
I told him, apparently, calling you. I got, I got, she told me twelve and I got seventeen, so. Make sure they tie it, lay down two, three bars. We'll get others that they fly.
That's supposed to secure it, I think. They'll secure it to the ground.
I don't know how they...
They don't have four concrete in them block, three board racks.
I know, but anyway, what we're going to try to do, we saw, Brett and I saw a setup down there today. It was like a pavilion, like one of them levels. She had like a car forward. And it went over the building and still had room enough to pull cars in there and marshal. So I thought when we talked, we were going to try to talk to Martin McDonald and let him back into that building. It's over there. Still getting it portable stuff. It's going to blow everywhere when a storm comes to and price on that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That's all I got.
Well, we need to, I need the council to be considering infrastructure up here at one twenty-nine at exit thirty. We had a halt, which we got to grant. We all know we got A-trip grant for one point eight million. But that, that is only for, for traffic lights. It's going to have to probably be installed or whatever. But that, that design is still being laid out there for that turning lanes and everything going into the pilot or on Michael Span Drive. And there'll be another road that comes off Michael Span that goes, that runs north and south on that property. But that, that A-trip money is only going to probably include on the state highway. We're going to have to have, we won't get what we got last time when we were trying to rush in there and get this thing done, to get it done in six months, which was able to do it in nine. But we didn't have storm drains. We didn't have road. We didn't have sewer and water, gas. I mean, power had to be running there. We're going, we're going to need to be looking at and possibly talking to, which we're going to have to, the water department, the water and sewer department's not going to be able to fully fund or, I don't know what part of it they could actually do because we know it was tough getting what we done to get in in time for what we did this time. But it needs to be done more in order than it was this last time because everybody was running every which way, running into other people's project work that there's doing and different things. We're going to have to get some infrastructure in there if we get anything else north of that pilot. We're going to have to, which the gas district has agreed to relocate the high-pressure gas line back the way to where it'd be completed out the way for the work's got to be done on one twenty-nine for the, A-trip money for the turning lanes. So for safety reasons, they're going to move it. They're going to have to bid that out. That, that project alone, which the gas district has agreed to do it because it is a high-pressure gas line that supplies the hay will be different places that up north of us. But that body alone, about a quarter million dollars. So we're fortunate the gas district has agreed as a whole to do that. But we're going to have to have water and sewer put in there. As everybody knows, that all sewer, city sewers goes to one place here if it's, if it's a city sewer system. So we're traveling in the... So, we're traveling a long way from near the Breat, all the way back down here to nearly Fayette County. So, we're gonna have to be understanding that if we further develop that, we're gonna have to, it's gonna entail, it's gonna have to be some expense on behalf of the city. And what I'd like to do is start trying to work with engineer, a particular engineer firm, and with the water department's engineer, and try to get this, it needs to, it, it needs to be done before somebody's ready to come in. Just for instance, we're doing this feasibility study with the retail strategist. Okay, they reach out there and they take this feasibility study and they like it, say, we're ready to come. And I mean, I'm gonna use the worst-case scenario, I say, it, it, I would say worst-case scenario is gonna be two years. Because it took nine months to do what a little bit we done here to get that ready. So, I, I feel like it, I ain't saying it can't be done quicker than two years. But if we start today trying to get this thing laid out, it's at least a year, year and a half to get it finished. For the water, sewer, storm drains, and all of that, which we will. The builder that owns the property, um, you know, the way we usually do it, is the road's gotta be ready when we take on the pavement or whatever. But, uh, for the storm drains, and the water and the sewer, for the water and sewer, um, that needs to be, that needs to be looked at, I think, as a whole, not just for that property, but for the city's property. Of course, we're on, we're on, we're on a, uh, uh, gravity on our side, and it comes down to pump station, and it comes right back up, one-twenty-nine comes down, hits fourteen, then comes down. I, I mean, we need to, to talk to, to some, uh, water and sewer people that can look at this as a whole up there, because we're talking about future housing development, retail business. We're gonna have to do, but we're gonna have to have more than what we've got. Todd sets on the word, he sets up there for the word, but he knows, he, he can attest to what I'm saying, it's because we don't. We're fortunate, I think we're fortunate that we were able to get what we did done in nine months, to get what we got accomplished with pilot and soda tar wall. If you put in another hotel up there, restaurants and housing, especially housing, um, the way these houses gonna, won't, gonna need to be done, it's not gonna be able to be on a septic system. So, um, I, I would, I mean, I, I kind of feel like that, just me thinking outside the phone. I feel like Breat, if, if Breat might need to come on board and somehow let's work together with the board of the forming, I don't know if that's ever possible, but Breat has got property where that road ends now, where Michael Span Drive ends, it starts in, it's Breat. Where it ends goes, it goes into Breat. And then we know as well that Breat's got property on the other side, south side of Hampton Inn. Um, I just, I'm gonna be in the talks, but at some point, I may, I may need to give the council, see if we can hire somebody to help lay this thing out, and the best, what we need, the best, what we need to do for the best part for that, for that area up there. Because it, I mean, we're, we're sending in a long way to treat it.
It's four, we got four pump stations between there and here, I believe four, maybe five.
Count mine. I'm pumping into it.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we got five.
And they have water and sewer coming out that far? Breat?
Breat don't have no sewer up there, too, but all they got's, all they've got is all, have they even got?
Only they got water, because that's one of the reasons why the, the, the wilds on the other side of the road got out of Breat, because they were promised water and they never got water, and we actually, Winfield Water actually serves them. Water's not, and I don't wanna say water's not a problem, because it's, it's an issue.
Not near the bottom of the sewer.
Not, and, and, and the sewer, the problem with sewer is, even if you do the work up there to handle it, which is a lot of infrastructure work, to handle it. Once we get down there, we don't have, we can't take it, because we don't have enough capacity. We talked to our engineer about adding a sale, you know, a, a, another pond or sale to the, to the, uh, lagoon, to, to take it. But, you know, you, a lagoon measures effluent is important. How much you discharge and how you discharge is very important. And, and your discharge is controlled by the intake. And if you intake too much, then you discharge too much, because it's gotta go somewhere, it's an in and out. So, I mean, e- e- even if we got the, even if we got the stuff done, so, you know, we could be looking at making a treatment facility, or something, up there, which is a, a tremendous, tremendous undertaking, tremendous undertaking. There's, you know, sewer, sewer costs, for example, in Winfield, if you're on sewer, your water bill is, your sewer bill's a hundred percent of your water. Truth be told, truth be told, it needs to be a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty, because it costs more to handle the sewer than it does to make the water. You make, you make water a lot cheaper than you handle sewer. So, your sewer needs to be, you know, some places have gone to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty-five percent of water, because of the cost of treating sewer. So, the sewer's the real issue, the waste water is the real issue, significant issue that we need to address.
Fortunately, you know, higher up the food chain, the federal government understands the need of water and sewer. Sometimes it's easier to get money for water and sewer than to do anything else. We did talk about that when we was in Washington this past week, you know, that was a topic that I discussed with, that we, infrastructure up here. It's just, I feel like we need to go ahead and, you know, understand that we're gonna develop that any further. If we're gonna go any further, we, we, it's just like the state has told us, we cannot do anything else up there until this project, this phase two of this is done. We can't, there cannot be no more businesses put on Michael Span Drive until this A-trip project is finished. Okay? They're working on getting that out for bid now, and you're looking at eight or nine months. But even when they do that, we're not, because we, we don't have, we cannot take no more sewer. That, the line that we got now won't handle any more sewer from up there.
Well, the, the line that's under that, and we don't, I, I think we've got a little bigger casing than we thought. We can actually punch a bigger line under, but if it gets too big, we may actually have to put a bigger casing. And we're talking about boring under twenty-two, uh, for, to put a bigger casing in there. So, you're talking about.
Or what do you do? There's a creek there. We can discharge there. There's a place to discharge. Have a big wood guy. But we need to get, I, I need to, you know, I need to get, get in, get hold of this problem, because it's definitely gonna be a problem, because we, that's just like advertising, you know, at a hospital, if you don't advertise, you do this, you do that, and then somebody comes, you can't do this, or do that, don't be advertising that you can do this or do that. So, we don't need to be advertising, we're open for business up there when we can't. We can't take on no more business.
Well, I think the, the, those developments they're talking about, the housing development, the build density is such that you, you can have that in septic tanks, I mean, it's just.
No, I can't, that's.
It's not gonna have to be sewer, it's impossible to have, if you expect septic tanks.
And, and, and that's where Aiden and everyone, different ones comes in, because they don't want that.
Yeah.
They want it to go through a Breat system. Because right now, some, too many, too much, uh, changing whatever they, they got, they got onto us down here before, and I said, I said, the only, there's not, there's less than a quarter mile of it in the signal in Winfield. Everything else is north of that.
Yeah.
So, you need to be.
It's not coming, we're not making it.
No, not in that, not in that length, stretch.
Yeah, we're just getting it.
But I just wanna bring that up, and I think that's something that we need to, um, get started on. I think we need to start on, by the way, because the clock's ticking. You know, we're trying to get retail businesses up there, we're trying to get housing up there, we're not, we're not ready for it, and we can't do it on that side. And we, and especially if another industry comes, you take, you take an industry, which I, I don't know what the ratio is, but if you got an industry that's employing sixty to a hundred people, uh, amount of sewer that's for that, if, if, you know, we don't, we're gonna get into a situation where we can't handle more industry. And I just feel like that we need to try to do something up there instead of bringing it all the way back down here. Even, and like Todd said, it's not, probably not harder than option to even bring it back down here, because we're not big enough to handle it here.
But it'd be possible, you're putting one in the game up there, somewhere between Hope, Brazil.
I sort of want to.
I, I, I would be, and I don't want to misspeak, but it'd be hard to get a little gun permit.
Anymore.
They don't want it. If you got one already, don't get rid of it, keep it there, because if it's permitted, you're using it. But as far as a new one, get a permit for a new one, if they all want it, possible, they're gonna tell you, you build a treatment facility.
On their own property up there. Sorry, we can do it like on our own property.
I don't know that they approve, that they give you some permit to operate.
They probably won't give you a permit.
To create a lagoon, they'll, they'll want a treatment facility, a treatment plant, or a package plant, or something like that.
More treating than no water. I mean, there's more stricter guidelines.
They're just, every, every day, they, well, not every day, I don't wanna jump on Aiden, but I mean, the numbers are changing on what you, the numbers you have to hit as a lagoon. And they're making, it, it's just really hard to get those numbers. It, it's hard to get them, because lagoon, along the work, I mean, it's, it's natural. And so, you're having to put a lot of chemicals in it to hit those numbers they want, and they're making it harder to hit the numbers, because they really want you out of the lagoon business, they want you in the treatment business, not in the lagoon business. So, it's just, it's difficult, difficult.
So, they, they keep that in the back of their mind, because I'm gonna be trying to work on, trying to see the best way to do that, working with the water department's engineer. We need, we need, we need to already be on top of that game. Um, it's really, uh, everybody needs to try out the new businesses open up in town down here, you know, check that out, you know, support them. We got people wanting to, you know, this community supports local business, which is good, and I should, I don't have to say it, but people support it. And it's good to have people that's really, that wants to put business in the town, you know, to help make the town grow, keep us from driving out of town. Nobody else got any other openings, I need to ask for a motion, favor. Keith made a motion, ten seconds long, favor. I need to ask for a motion before I adjourn to go into executive session to discuss a possible business proposition. We won't take any more action when we come back in. Made a motion by Johnny, Gina second, all in favor.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century. And today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just wanna let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now has a lawn mower. We're gonna have a full line of the steel zero-turn mowers. We have a full line of the steel weed trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint, to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Geun and Fayette. We've been serving the people of northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year, and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year, and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air.
We've been family-owned and operated since nineteen fifty-four, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So, as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Geun to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at two oh five four eight seven four three two seven.